Let's call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if anyone else is recording the meeting? Seeing none, if you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. Good evening, everyone. Do we have any citizens' comments this evening?
I do not believe so, Mr. Chair.
There's no one here. I knew we had a, we were gonna have a guest. I didn't know if there was gonna be a comment. Okay.
I don't believe so.
Seeing none, we will move right on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have with us this evening Auburn Middle School's sixth grader Alyssa Gervasi, daughter of Reno and Tricia Gervasi of Auburn. And she has published a book titled Maya in the Shelter Grove Jumping Competition, which is currently on Amazon. According to Mr. Desto, who's also with us tonight. Alyssa is a terrific young lady, great personality, a high honor student. Alyssa and her family plan to give a copy to the Swiss Library, as that's the age appropriate level for the, for the book. And we're happy to have Alyssa here with her family tonight, again along with Mr. Desto, to talk a little bit more about how she came to write this book. It's excellent.
Excellent. Welcome. Mr. Desto, would you like to take over from here? Hold on, Mr. Desto. We're not getting any sound. Just give it a second. Try that. No. Every time we have Mr. Desto here, something happens. Is it coincidence? I'm sorry, Alyssa. We're usually, usually a little more organized than this. I know this isn't up to your standards. Just bear with us. Who's that bothering you, Alyssa? Is that Dad? Tell him to go watch TV. Just bear with us. It's gonna be a very boring meeting if we can't hear you.
Yeah, we haven't had that lip reading course yet either. Yeah.
It seems like they can hear us fine. You can hear us fine, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I like the cover of the book. It's intriguing.
Is there any chance it's just the sound on the TV?
I don't know. Is this, I don't, I don't have the...
Or the, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't know if the sound's up on the TV or... I don't know if it's...
We had the same problem last week too.
Greg, can you, Greg, can you try and talk again, see if we can hear you? Yeah, no, okay.
We can hear each other.
Who knows what's going on over there?
No, they can hear each other. They're talking to each other. Greg and Tricia.
And they can hear us. That's great.
That's what I was saying. Can you, on the mouse, can you just hover over, I'm sorry, like just hover over the, the audio, the speaker on the bottom and just see how, how high, all the way to the bottom, like keep on that way. Oh, so that's fine. So it might just be the TV?
Is there a volume button? You know, I may go check.
Oh.
Just bear with us. We're still working on it. I would tell a few jokes, but I'm an amateur compared to Mr. Desto, so I'm not going there.
Alyssa's probably heard all my jokes anyway.
Probably.
I usually refresh my repertoire over the summer, Alyssa.
Try speaking to someone, Mr. Desto.
Can you hear me? Nope, can't, still can't hear me? Okay.
We can hear you.
Alyssa, maybe you could go and write another book while you're waiting.
At least start one.
It would, it would take way longer than you think, believe me.
Mr. Desto, could you try again?
Yep, trying again, testing.
All right, I get something in here. Hold on. Keep talking.
Mr. Desto.
Boy, people don't usually say that to me. It's usual, I'm usually get, getting muted by the host of the meeting.
We're not getting it at our seats, but Chris Hughes is getting it over there, so it's a start.
How long did it take you to write the book, Alyssa?
Couple months.
Couple months?
It was, it was on and off, sort of thing.
When did you do it?
And then I worked on it, and then I took a break, worked on it, yeah.
Was it, did you do most of it in the summer, or did you kind of work on it at night, or what?
Don't remember really, but I did finish it a lot. Well, I finished a good chunk, chunk of it during the school, school break, the holidays. I don't know, school session, I don't, I don't know.
Like a pandemic project? Yeah.
Well, actually it was.
Yeah. Well, that's a good use of time. I have the first four chapters of a book written, and that's taken me, oh, I don't know, five years. Got a ways to go. Hey, Jen?
Greg, can you see his cell phone?
Wow, I don't trust it. It wasn't within arm's reach.
I could call Tricia on my cell phone.
Hi, UDA. All right, hold on, let me turn my speaker on. All right, can you hear me?
Tricia, we're gonna try to call you as well.
I know, I'm getting your feedback, I'm like... How's that?
I'm calling her, she's not answering. Hi. So we might have to do this through the phones. Are you getting that noise through your, there's a lot of feedback. Alyssa, Caitlin is missing you right now at dance.
I mean, it's this one, hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
Your should work now.
Yeah, you guys are almost done with it.
So I'm good?
Uh, last couple weeks.
How we doing? I'm good. So why don't we, why don't we do this over the telephone? I'm gonna put you into my microphone.
Oh, yeah, can you hear everything?
So why don't you go ahead and tell us all about Alyssa?
I'll let you go.
Okay, so, uh, it's, I'm getting like the, the double voice like I do on the morning announcements, so I'm actually used to this.
Yeah, sorry. You sound great.
Again, I, I think when, when I found out about Alyssa writing the book, the first thing I did is I looked her up on Power School. And when I looked at her report card, it reminded me of, you guys that are from the eighties, well, remember when Mary Lou Retton hit that vault to win the gold medal, and it was all ten, 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 ten? Except there was another zero on the end of all of it. You know, she's an extraordinary student, and just think about, I thought about what I was doing when I was in sixth grade, you know, trying to find a, a wiffle ball or a touch football game in the neighborhood. And, and she's written and already published a book, and it's, it's really pretty extraordinary. And so the, the real, the point I want her to hear from me tonight in public is that sometimes the students inspire the adults in the school. And, and she has certainly done that here with me. So I, I was just telling them before, I have four chapters of a book written over the last five years, so maybe it's time for me to get more of my book now too. Sure, it won't be as good as hers, but she's an extraordinary girl, great personality in addition to being a great student, and sets a good example all the way around. She's also an excellent dancer, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna get a big head, so I don't wanna go on too much.
Yeah. Well, she gets that from her mom, so... We're contemporaries, her mom and I.
Okay.
So should I have Alyssa?
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Desto, thank you. So we're gonna sign off from you, and then we're gonna let Alyssa talk to us through Mrs. Harrington's phone.
Okay, I'll just listen. Thank you very much.
If Alyssa turn, if you turn the volume down on theirs, like what they're feeling, we'll still be able to hear them, and they won't get the feedback.
Okay, if you turn your volume all the way down, then there'll be less feedback, and we'll still be able to hear you. Okay. Oh, hold on, all right. Go ahead, hon. Go ahead.
Tell us about the book, Alyssa.
About this young, young girl named Maya, and her mother is a professional show jumping. She's a professional show jumper, so she... She has a professional show jumping horse, and she jumps at competitions, or jumps with her horse. And, um, her, the horse is named Flame, and her mother always told her, when you're ten, you could finally ride Flame, because she wouldn't be big enough or old enough. So when she turns ten, she rode Flame for the first time, and her mother allowed her to enter, enter a comp, um, a competition, a local competition. Delta Cove Show Jumping Competition, and she, it was all about the different, you know, the challenges and surprises and all the stuff she faced, uh, before and during the competition.
Sounds like a great book. So what made you think of writing this book?
Um... The, um, well, Swiss, um, had, was doing a writing competition, and then COVID halted it. So I still, yeah, in fifth grade, and I still wrote a, a book, which is actually a different book, smaller, short story. That's what name of one too, actually, 'cause when the, um, when the competition, um, when the, and then, when we heard that the competition wasn't actually going to happen, um, we sent it to my fifth grade teacher, just so she could see it. And then we published it, and then I started working on... The books that I'm actually working on now, and then I had it stopped, and I wrote a different one, but Maya is actually kind of based on my dream of what I wanted to, like, do, like live on a farm, have a couple horses. Not exactly the show jumping part, but, you know. Kind of like that.
That's excellent. Is there any chance you could help Mr. Desto with his book, because you're on your second one, and he's only on his fourth chapter?
Sure.
Maybe you could set aside some time at school, you know, since you're way ahead of the game anyway, and Mr. Desto's way behind, you could get onto his office and just show him some of your techniques.
Sure.
All right, I'm glad I could make that happen. Does anyone, anybody comments or questions for Alyssa?
Through the chair, do you ride horses?
Yeah, I actually do. Um, I go to a local stable called Stow Farm. I actually had a lesson today on one of my, of one of the horses. Actually, speaking of this horse, her name is Dow, and she is a thirteen, and that's like a height, kind of like we count by like four foot nine, which is actually what I am, or like five foot two or something like that. And we, for the horses, they're counted in hands, and hands are about four inches, so kind of like your hands. And, um, yeah, she's a bay, which is a, like a reddish brown color with a black mane and black legs. And she was actually the inspiration for Flame.
Ah.
'Cause when she was, before she was, um, kind of sold to Stow Farm, she had a young girl as an owner, and they used to, she used to show jump her, and she would jump three feet. Up to three feet, and she's old, she's very small. She actually still does jump pretty well, so, yeah. She's an older girl now, but, yeah.
I used to ride there. The horse I rode was named Tanner, though. Probably isn't riding anymore.
Tanner? My daughter rode Tanner.
Tanner, white?
Yeah.
Tanner White, yeah. Yeah, I love Tanner.
Yes. I used to like to go and watch, watch it there, yeah.
Yeah, he's big.
Yep.
Now, see, Alyssa, you've turned us almost into like a horse club instead of a school committee. We're making all types of connections here. Anyone else have any comments for Alyssa?
Looks like a great book. I'm gonna buy it for Caitlin, so she can read it.
Thank you.
Now, can I find this on, on video, Alyssa, so I don't have to read?
Oh my gosh.
Well, maybe someone could read it to you.
There's no audiobook. Your book's on tape.
Okay. Well, maybe sometime after church, when we're all able to get in there again for coffee hour, you could just help me out with it. That would be great. But no, we're, we're very proud of you. I can't wait to take a look at the book. I haven't had the opportunity yet. Um, I did stop by your house the other day, but it was actually the wrong house, so I met one of your neighbors. I wasn't there for the book, but, yeah, I went to the wrong house. Just so you know, if one of your neighbors says some crazy guy came to my house thinking it was yours, just explain to them that you know me and that I am a little bit crazy. But no, we're very proud of you, and you did a great job representing yourself tonight, and I'm sure you're gonna continue to do a great job representing Auburn schools and representing the town of Auburn. And it's gonna be a, a pleasure to watch you grow as a student and, and a young lady. Mr. Hanfield, did you have anything before we went to the Javassis?
I did, just other than, other than to just say how impressive, you know, this accomplishment is, um, I did have a chance to go and, and, you know, go to Amazon, and, and there it is, um, you know, just as you see it here on the, on the agenda. And it's just very, very impressive, and just thrilled to, to be able to bring things like this to the community and to the committee, um, to show just what awesome things our kids are doing, you know, both in and out of school. So I'll be forking over eight bucks for you, Alyssa. I'll be buying my own copy. And, um, once Mr. Scobie finds the right house, I'll come and get it autographed. How's that? I'll come with him. But no, really, great job. So proud of you, and, and thanks for, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Javassis, and, and thank you, Mr. Desto. Have a nice evening. We'll talk to you soon.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Okay, and moving on to student representative.
I don't see them.
Do you think maybe we should... I don't know, we don't have to hear anything else from the gallery, so I was gonna say, should we shut down the live portion of the meeting, but it's not necessary for us to hear anyone in the audience.
No, but you have people that I think are, you have people that are listening.
Okay. Yeah, well, we can keep, keep it live then, sure.
Now, what about Aaron and Jasmine?
Yeah, I don't...
I don't see their name up there.
Yeah, they're not, they...
Even if they showed up, it would be kind of difficult to do the report.
Yeah, no, I agree.
We'll move, we'll move right on to, um, I, I entertain the motion to approve the minutes of three ten twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Thank you. And we now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have the second donation of personal protective equipment from Gentex Optics. We'd like to extend a thank you to Mr. Edward Chamberlain in Gentex Optics in Dudley, Massachusetts, for another donation of two hundred reusable face shields. These shields will be distributed for staff usage and are greatly appreciated. So we've got a motion to accept those with gratitude.
Intertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude the second donation of reusable face shields from Gentex Optics in Dudley through Mr. Ed Chamberlain?
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Oh, that's just wonderful.
That's great.
It is. Thank you so much.
So you must have a whole array of face shields at home.
Well, I wasn't gonna tell everyone, but...
I think some are actually on display when you go out of the building.
Like, how are you doing?
That could be an art project. Decorate your face shield.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is a vote. Can we now move on to unfinished business?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just, I mean, as you can see here, the, the agenda's rather light, um, partly because we've been hunkered down, um, getting ready for our April fifth return to school. Just with respect to COVID, um, and where we are with our numbers, um, they continue to ebb and flow on the daily as I report out to, to the community. But we continue the, the positive downward trend, um, compared to where we were at the start of, of the year in January. So while we're pleased this is happening, um, we're gonna continue to, um, just speak with our students and the community about the importance of mask wearing, hand washing, uh, keeping appropriate distance, and things of that nature. I think not just here in Auburn, but I think across the state, I think, and, and I get it, I, I appreciate where people are at, you know, it's, the, the weather's nice, and vaccines are here, and schools are starting to reopen, and, and, um, what we wanna be very careful of is that we don't get lulled into a false sense of security. Um, especially in that zero to nineteen age group, which is right now at the highest risk of, of transmission, so, um, we're doing good. Um, you know, as, as that goes, we are out of the red as a community, um, and so we're making the right, the right strides, but we wanna make sure that we do that, you know, as we start to head back to school. So I don't know.
Any comments or questions?
I, I just have one. I'm kind of mixed up on what's gonna happen next week. Would you, you not terribly going over there?
No, absolutely not. Nope, happy to do that. So next week, um, so a few meetings ago, we, we had all talked kind of about the transition and the importance of the transition for everyone to come back in, not just only the kids, but faculty and staff, et cetera. So, uh, on Monday, it's a regular Cohort A day. On Tuesday, we're bringing all of the kids in, um, who are returning April five. Uh, Cohort A and B will be together. Wednesday is a, is a normal, um, remote day. We're gonna use that as our first day to kind of debrief how the, how Tuesday went with all the kids in the building. If there are any adjustments that need to be made, we'll make those, and then we'll have the kids all back again on Thursday, and test run, um, everything again. And then if we need to make any adjustments, we'll have that Friday, um, to, uh, to make any adjustments, and in preparation for the kids coming back April five.
So is Friday gonna be a school day for everybody?
So Friday is, is a Cohort B day.
Oh, B?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause we had A on Monday.
Correct.
So this would be B's turn.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, so Cohort A's on Monday, Cohort B's on Friday. Both cohorts are together remotely, as they always are on Wednesday, and then all of them will be together, um, that are coming, returning to Auburn, um, schools, um, on Tuesday and Thursday.
Okay.
And then the students who are electing to stay remote, they, they won't have any disruption to their, their schooling, because nothing's changed for them. And while I'm thinking of it, uh, you know, related to that, uh, we've, this past week, we've, we've been having, um, students that are coming back remote for the first time. Uh, we've been having different, um, tours and transition things for those students as well, um, on top of, you know, what they're gonna have next week. So, um, we're trying to, you know, kind of slowly move into this, and we try, we wanna make sure that we do it in a way that's kind of a controlled release, um, from, you know, buses to traffic, to traffic in schools, to classrooms, so on and so forth. So, um, so, yeah, so we're excited about that. We're excited about having the kids back. And, you know, as it says here in, in the agenda, um, you know, we continue to move ahead, and we've had a couple of professional development days, um, in the last few weeks, and, you know, we're continuing to make excellent progress in buildings. Um, right now, we're putting the finishing touches on the busing. Um, and you probably will start to see, um, on the external part of Bryn Mawr and, and Pacc and Swiss, um, the tents will probably start going up this week. Mr. Fahy was expecting, originally it was an April first delivery, but we're looking at perhaps as early as, um, Thursday or, tomorrow or Friday. So, um, there will be three, uh, twenty by forty tents at Bryn Mawr, three twenty by forty tents at Paccachog, and four, uh, twenty by forty tents at Swanson Road. So if people start to see those go up, the carnival's not coming to town. It's, it's, we're providing, um, just about half the square footage of each of those buildings in outdoor space that's covered, um, so that people, you know, the teachers will have opportunities to get kids outside as much as possible, um, to handle specials, physical education, music, so on and so forth. But, yeah, we're, we're, we're good. We had a meeting yesterday, and then everybody's feeling good about the return. You know, it's been a bit of a, bit of a sprint, you know, since the end of February, but, but we're in good shape.
And are you putting the tents up on the fields?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So there'll be, yeah, so you'll, Joe's, uh, Mr. Fahy's been working with the building principals to identify the locations. We obviously, we want them as close to the building as we can get them, but we also wanna make sure that we weren't any, into any issues with, with town, 'cause they have to be inspected, and it's, it's another structure, and so there has to be some, some, um, building revision through the, the code office at Town Hall. So we'll have those done, um, as well.
With tables and chairs, or?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, we went out and, um, we were able to, you know, well, we, we had a, a pretty good supply in district already of chairs, uh, because we had made a decision four or five years ago. We used to rent chairs, uh, for graduation every year, and we found that it was just cheaper if we went and bought a thousand, um, you know, nice durable chairs, um, cheaper in the long run. And so this is actually a great example of how those come in handy for just on our graduation. We're able to use them, you know, in the tents for the, the kids. We bought tables where we needed them. Um, like I think I said, may have said at the last meeting, we purchased desks as well, um, you know, for Paccachog. So, so we're well provisioned. We have, we have everything that we need. Um, now it's just, you know, test running this plan a couple times next week, and then April five, welcome them in. And then we'll have them for two weeks, and then vacation.
So you threw that to you?
Okay.
I just have one question, just to confirm. I think you guys went over through this last time, but, okay, you're wrong. If we have kids that need to quarantine? I know that we're moving more into like a self-paced, you know, model as opposed to having them Zoom in. Is that the, the final word, like, so kids won't, if a kid needs to be home for two weeks, are they just gonna get their assignments as if they were sick for two weeks? Or is, or the Zoom line still open?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So the, the commissioner and his guidance of March ninth, um, was very clear in that the only remote instruction, unless you were in a remote program, the only remote, uh, instruction that would count towards a child's student learning time would be if you had COVID or were quarantining because of COVID. Students who, um, are not, uh, are not in school because of those two reasons would have to, right, go back to, you know, the, the student learning craft platforms that we have. Um, if a child was going to be out longer than, uh, ten days, then it would be a home hospitalization situation, so we would try to secure a tutor for that child. I mean, we're gonna do, you know, we're, we're gonna do what's in the best interest of the child, you know, in every situation, but, um, you know, the idea with the commissioner is to start moving away from remoting in, um, for different things. So, so, yeah, unless it's a COVID-related issue, um, we'll have to do it kind of pre-pandemic.
But, but for COVID, just, so just to clarify, are the teachers still gonna be expected to have their Zoom lines open and available? Okay, okay.
Yeah, and that's, and, yes, and that's, that's what we, Dr. Chamberlain and I, um, had what we think will be our final meeting with the AEA around, um, memorandum of... Um, memorandum of understanding, and that's, that's one of the pieces that's in it, is is, um, you know, that language.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have one more question. Um, are you gonna follow the regular times for the schools that we used to do, or we're gonna go back to?
Yeah, 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 with the exception of, you know, the 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 COVID precautions that are in place, it's, it's, school is, as we've been saying, school is school. You know, back to regular hours, um, you know, back to, yeah, just back to school is school.
Great.
Taking appropriate precautions. Um, but yeah, it it's, this is, we all feel this, I know, all of us around the table feel this way, or in this room tonight feel that way. But even among the 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 teaching staff, uh, they, you know, it's time to get back to normal. And so, um, yeah, so that's, that's our, that's our plan.
And are you doing staggered pickup and drop-off times, or are you just hoping that things kind of?
Yeah, so, you know, we've looked at, we've looked at the students that are on the buses, we've we've looked at kind of that traffic piece, we've talked with the with the APD. And we're pretty comfortable that, you know, having, you know, some some detail and some traffic, specific traffic, you know, direction out there. Um, at each of the buildings, um, you know, will be, will be okay. Um, if it doesn't, that'll be one of the things that we'll learn in the trial run next week. Um, you know, that we need to rethink that. Um, so, but, but, um, yeah, so we were, we we were finishing that discussion with, um, with Officer Kennedy today. Um, he sent an email of confirmation, so, um, yeah, so we've, we've made them aware and and we're gonna give it a go and see.
And how about teacher vaccinations, do we have like a percentage of how many teachers are vaccinated?
Uh, where are we as of now?
We're at almost two sixty out of three fifty.
Yeah, two sixty.
That show interest, right, that initially showed interest.
And how many teachers do we have total in the district?
Two, well, to just, teachers.
Oh, I meant like all staff.
So teachers.
All staff is around four eleven.
Yeah.
Everybody is four eleven.
Yeah. Yeah, four eleven altogether, teaching staff, uh, teaching, uh, personnel is around two hundred and thirty-two.
Okay.
So, and, yeah, so, yeah, so we're making, we continue to make a good dent in that, and that's, and that's what we know, we're asking them to report to us. When they get their appointments, when they've had their shots, et cetera, but, um, you know, for for people that are 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 most at risk. Um, the vast majority of those from from what we understand from self-reporting, those folks have, have been able to get their vaccinations, or at least one dose.
Everyone even like say, are our remote teachers gonna be teaching from the buildings?
No, not in all cases, because the way that we've had to space out cla- you know, uh, classes and and everything in buildings, we we can't. Some teachers who are teaching our kids, like their schedule is entirely remote, we'd have to find another space for them in the building. And so space is already tight, so they actually are doing us a favor, um, by continuing to teach, you know, from from their home, so. Um, we do have some teachers that have have kind of a split schedule, they have some in person and some remote, and those folks are doing it, obviously, from the buildings. Um, but we have, in in each of our buildings, we have at least, you know, one s- one situation per building where the teacher is almost entirely exclusively remote. And so, it it just would complicate, you know, to add somebody else in where the space is kind of tight.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Well, I know one thing, the students are excited to get back, and perhaps the the tents will, will provide a little bit more of a festive atmosphere when it. Maybe they'll think there's more to it than just school is school and, uh, but I think they're gonna be excited just hopping on that bus or or walking or getting a ride to school that. That that first day when when they're all in, it's just.
Yeah.
I'm getting that sense at home, that that's for sure.
Yeah.
Except the wake-up time.
Well, I'll tell you, I mean, definitely, I mean, and I, Cecilia and Dr. Chamberlain will attest, I mean, it definitely feels like, uh, the last weekend in August.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Around here, you know, in terms of just getting stuff going, but it's, it's good, I mean, it's it's good, it's a good feeling, you know, so.
The only difference is you had no break leading up to this.
Well, that's true, that's true, we've had, we've had three, we've had three restarts of a school year, but that's okay. Um, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll get it done, so.
I'm su- I'm sure you will.
But we're excited, we're excited to get the kids back, and, um, yeah, we're just excited to get normalcy back, start moving in that direction.
Great. Alright, moving on.
Thank you.
Uh, just real quick, uh, we had talked about the school calendar, um, last, at our last meeting, um, we're we're just double checking that. To make sure that what our professional development needs will be for the upcoming school year, um, will be adequately, uh, taken care of within the school calendar, so. We haven't made any adjustments to the calendar from the last time, um, but there may be, you know, some half-days that we have to put in there. Um, you know, around PD, there may be some around teacher meetings, but we are, we are trying to streamline the amount of half-days that are in the, in the calendar. Understanding that our kids, we want them in school, especially, you know, coming off of, you know, where we, where we are right now, and, um. And also being mindful of the fact that it can be a lot on parents, so we're trying to find that happy medium. Um, so we'll have that, you know, uh, either at April fourteenth or April twenty-eighth, we'll see, we'll see how that goes.
Do you have a question?
Through you, I do just have one question about the calendar, and I know this has not traditionally been included in the school calendar, but, um.
Sure.
And we might not even be there yet in terms of our transition planning for these kids that are going from one school to another.
Mm-hmm.
Over the summer.
Yeah.
Um, but would it be possible to look at including any, like, step-up day or any, you know, um, I can't even remember what we call the one on Mary David, you know, um.
Yeah, sure. You mean, so so like if we had a date for our?
This is where the school starts, but during a certain week in August, but, so parents know when they need to be around, because I feel like going into next year will be a little bit more pivotal than some, some of the other years maybe.
Yeah, yeah. Sure. Yeah. 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 No, that's, that's a, that's a good point, um, that's a good point.
It's possible, if it's.
Oh, yeah, no, we can, no, I mean, we can, we can kick that around, um, but no, it it, I I don't think that would be a big deal.
Okay.
We could, we could plan that out.
Thank you.
Sure.
Alright. Moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and then, and then finally, before we turn it over to, uh, to Dr. Chamberlain, um, as some of you know, or or maybe all of you know. That we had the opportunity to present our FY twenty-two budget to the Finance Committee last Wednesday evening. Um, and it was a much more streamlined version, you know, obviously, of what we did here over two nights. Um, but the, uh, the Finance Committee was was very supportive, uh, which we sincerely appreciate. And they voted to recommend our number of twenty-seven million nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred and forty dollars and forty-five cents. Uh, to go forward to town meeting floor. So, that's, that's two-thirds of the way where we need to be, so we have selected board endorsement, we have, uh, town manager and, um. And, um, assistant town manager endorsement, we've got the FinComs endorsement, and so now we just, we need to bring it to town meeting floor on, um. On May fourth, and hopefully, town meeting will, will, will move, um, move to appropriate that number. And again, um, that number is a point nine nine increase over last year's appropriate number at the June town meeting. And it's a two point eight nine increase over the appropriate number in our special town meeting in October. Um, we'll have our public hearing, uh, remotely April fourteenth, and then, like I said, we'll seek town meeting approval on May fourth, but. Um, we're pleased at the direction that that's moving, um, especially in a a tough year.
I just have a question, when we say public meeting remotely, is that gonna be like tonight?
Sure, yeah, so similar to, so similar, yeah, so similar, so similar to, similar to, um. Uh, similar to what we did last year, uh, we won't, I it, I I don't think it's necessary to bring us all together, I think we can, we can, um, zoom in. Um, you know, from, you know, our our homes, especially where we're gonna have principals and and everybody together.
Oh, so we'll all zoom in?
Yeah, so we'll all zoom in and and we'll do, we'll, we'll, we'll do the the hearing similar to how we did it last year.
Oh, okay.
Which we'll, we'll read on numbers and and go from there. Um, I think that makes more sense, otherwise it would be, I think it would just, it would just be more complicated if we tried to do it from here and there and.
Well, I was just thinking, this isn't working so good.
Everywhere, yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, and the other part of it too is, is it's another night, you know, I mean, the administrators are swimming right now, you know, in in stuff, and it. Um, you know, i- it's just one less night that I, we need to ask them to come out, so. Um, I think it, and and for all of you as well, it it's a, you know, you can do it from home. Um, so, I think there'll be more information on that to come. And, uh, and that's it, Mr. Chair, I have nothing further right now, thank you.
Thank you, well, we now move on to teaching and learning, Dr. Chamberlain.
Hey, everyone, nice to see you all. So, as much as we are planning for April fifth, we're also looking ahead to next year and how we're going to begin the year, because this is the time of. Of the year that we normally do that, so I just wanted to share a few of the kind of training initiatives that are going to be happening in the upcoming year. Um, as we prepare to think about, um, you know, welcoming kids back to a full year of school, hopefully all in person. We have recently, um, entered into an agreement with CLE, the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity. This is going to tie to the diversity committee that Dr. Handfield started earlier in the year. Um, with, uh, a number of stakeholders, students, alumni, teachers, parents. Um, around equality, equity, and diversity issues here in the district. What CLE is going to help us do is to do an equity audit, and so they look at all of our, they help us to look at our own data. To kind of walk through the data, to see where there may be inequities that exist, whether it's with access to AP or. Some of the things special education students participate in, or if it's related to race or gender or anything like that, so. It's an overall kind of, um, audit that we hope will take place with the help of this committee that Dr. Handfield has already established, so we'll have good representation from across the district. And from that, it'll help us to create a plan to continue to improve upon what we believe is already a very welcoming and inclusive, um, district. Um, but there are always ways we can do better and always things we can do better, so they're gonna help us to walk through that, so that'll be a big initiative in the coming year. Perhaps even maybe starting during the summer, um, depending on on what they can do for time, so we're very excited about that. Um, recently, Mr. Bouvier and I, uh, late last, well, before, right before March, we had pulled together some folks. Interested in serving on what we were calling the Apple Innovation Team, uh, the Auburn Innovation Team through Apple. And so, it was some folks at the middle school and high school that are fairly technology-forward. With the hope of pushing them either further ahead to then become trainers for others in the district. So that when we determine best practices in relation to some technology, some very advanced technology. Um, they'll kind of be the the person, so that there'll be a couple of people at the high school that can help me who may not be able to do that. So we've got, kind of rallied that back together, it does require a good bit of training. Um, that's why we really didn't wanna fall into it this year, because everybody had everything on their plates full already, right? And to take on a brand-new, pretty big project this year, the timing just didn't seem right. But I think now with the experience everyone has had with technology, I think we're really better positioned now to move everybody forward a bit with some additional training. Um, so we're excited about that, we're working out the details, um, with when that training will happen, that probably will be more through the summer and again into next year. And then finally, I participated in, um, some training through DESI with a gentleman, John Crocker, from Methuen, who. Leads their, uh, mental health team in the district. He's, um, set up his own website, he does a lot of training through DESI, a lot through youth, um, uh, Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth, he's brilliant. So, he's going to help us again do a bit of an audit on what are the mental health offerings we have? That we can provide with our staff in the district. What's our caseload of kids? How do people's schedules impact when they can meet with students? Are we capitalizing on group therapy for those who can do that, right, based on their background and their training? Um, and then it's going to also help us identify where are our holes, right? Where do we need to pull someone in from outside to really maximize on the supports we're providing for kids? But it'll help us do it in a very methodical way, um, and this mental health team will be made up of representatives from each building, either guidance, or our school psychologists, our social workers. Couple of administrators, um, and there are already some tools out there that you use to conduct this needs assessment. Um, because, you know, all of our counselors have masters-level, you know, folks, but they all have different backgrounds with what their experiences are related to mental health. So we need to get a better handle on that, so we can really structure a program where, you know, K to twelve, we have a plan for what kids need when they get it. Tracking their progress, making sure that they're making progress, you know, so that kids don't see the guidance counselor every week for a year, right? We wanna be more thoughtful and more focused, so the guy, I already met with the guidance team about it, they're very excited. Everything. I'm sorry, but it's just, okay, we don't know, I think that was the, was that last call?
That wasn't me.
Um.
I think it only just turned on.
No, it's just the television, you're okay, just the monitor, that's all.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, but anyway, it's another initiative that we're very excited about, as is our guidance team, so we're looking forward to that, and he can also provide some additional training if we were to need something around certain things. Um, and then, planning for summer school, Dr. Handfield and I are in the midst of trying to figure out how much we can offer, what that's going to cost. Certainly try, we're gonna keep it, I think, at the four weeks we've al- always had, but trying to ha- uh, bring in more kids with more staff. Um, I think everybody's gonna want a bit of free time this summer, that they can do some things that they haven't been able to do. Um, but we know that those four weeks are gonna be very targeted and hopefully very intensive, so. Um, uh, more planning to come, but E S Y is well on its way already with Mrs. Reedy, so. Lot of good things looking forward, and most of all, April fifth, I'm waiting to have kids back, we're very excited about that, so. I don't know if you have any questions?
Excellent, any comments or questions?
I just have one, can parents ask that their children be included in the summer school program, or is it based on teacher recommendation?
So it's primarily based on teacher recommendations, but if a parent reaches out to, uh, a principal or or to the teacher and says. This is why I really think my child should come, um, we will certainly, if it, we feel it's appropriate. What's happened sometimes is we've had kids who love going to school, and they're like, well, can my son come, but. You know, and you laugh, but it's happened, um, you know, we wanna make sure that we're really, you know, targeting the kids who need us most. But if there's someone who can say that this is why I'm concerned, then we'll certainly hear that, for sure.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very, it's funny you say that, Dr. Chamberlain, because when I was a youngster, I always wanted to go back in the summer, but they wouldn't let me. I wanted to do the full eight weeks, but it just wasn't happening.
And you, you were a good boy too, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Thank you for that report.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Alright, now second to only the horse presentation. Alyssa's, in Alyssa's book, we have business and financial.
Okay, um, I've included in your packet a year-to-date budget report dated March twenty-second. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on the budget that you, if you have any.
Any questions?
Seeing no questions, I've also included a, uh, list of budget transfers, uh, also dated March twenty-second. Uh, between the same series of your information, and there are some between different series requiring your approval.
And I do have a question.
Okay.
Um, several of the budget items say to preserve school choice for future funding. I don't get what the monies, why the money, it says that with the money. Like fifty-four thousand to preserve school choice, or how is that money being used?
Basically, what we've done was we've been switching, trying to save our school choice funds, because that's something that we can carry forward.
Oh.
Into the next few years, it's a, it's a fund where it it doesn't have to be spent, our budget has to be expensed by June thirtieth.
Oh, okay.
So, where I've been finding, if I've been finding some extra money that we've been able to save, we've been trying to, um, in, we have our offsets in the budget. So what I've been trying to do is take those offsets and limit them, and keep the monies that we can preserve to keep us moving down the road. Um, and use up the budget, which has to go away by the end of June. Um, like a a regional school district, they're, they have an E and D that they could carry money over. In a town municipal, um, district like ourselves, at the end of June thirtieth, our money goes back to the town, and it's no longer ours to use. So with our offsets, the way we set up the budget is we try to offset different things with all of our accounts, and school choice. And also the pre-K revolving account, which we, has taken a hit this year with kids not coming and. Our revenues were down, so we tried to move some of the teaching positions back into the budget to save those funds. So that's basically what that is.
Yeah, okay.
Dr. Handfield, do you wanna add anything?
Yeah, no, I, no, I, I was just gonna, and and you just, you hit the nail on the head, so we, so we have, uh, so our operating budget is, for next year, is that twenty-seven million, um. You know, nine eighty-five number that I had mentioned earlier. But, um, we also have two and a half million dollars in in offsets that we use, so. Um, let's just say we didn't have school choice, we didn't have, uh, you know, pre-K revolving, we didn't have satellite, we didn't have galaxy funds. All of that then theoretically would then be, we'd be going to the town asking for that in our operational budget. So, this year, it's been kind of a quirky year financially, um, because schools haven't been open. Um, you know, there have been some cost savings in the operational budget related to busing, there've been some cost savings related to. Um, you know, some of the athletics, um, some of our extracur- our co-curricular activities. Um, you know, that that didn't happen, so to take, we were able to take that that funding. And, you know, as Ms. Wasbicky said, to to take that money that we could capture in the operational budget. And, you know, so our preschool enrollment, for example, is down, so we're not generating the revenue we normally would have this year. But that then leaves us a big gap for next year, so we're able to slide that money over. School choice is something, same, we can carry school choice forward. Um, and so, we're, you know, we leveraged that pretty high this year. To help, you know, especially early on in the school year, it was leveraged pretty high, so we were able to make some adjustments and preserve, you know, that money, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I just didn't quite understand that terminology. Okay.
I know, I was trying to find a good way to describe it, so thank you for asking that question.
They were both good.
Any other questions with regard to the transfers, and if not, I could have your approval?
I entertain that motion.
I make a motion to approve the transfers between series as presented.
You know, second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, it is a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, and then the bus applications are out there for next school year. And they've been shared with families through the One Call, they're also up on the website. And I know that hard copies will be going home with the students at the end of the try, try-two, which is actually readily approaching, right?
Yeah, March twenty.
Those will be going home soon. But we're available to ask any questions, the deadline is still June first, it's been a little bit confusing because we have. We're dealing in two fiscal years right now. I've been working myself and the whole staff have been working, taking calls from parents, trying to get everybody in on the buses. Where people, a lot of people had paid previously last year, just trying to work through who is actually coming back and is gonna be riding on the buses. Today was our deadline to, for people to let me know if they were coming back. And so we're gonna just be trying to look at all the routes and make sure that we could fit all the kids comfortably and safely. Within the protocols and guidelines, and so, that's what we've been working on, it's been a busy couple of days and.
Yeah.
So, but, any questions with regard to busing or?
Any questions?
If parents, I, you know, I say again, if parents have questions, please have them reach out to me directly and I'm more than happy to reach out to them and. Deal with them and make sure everything works out for them, so.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
All right, that's my report, thank you very much.
Thank you for that report. Appreciate it. And do you have anything else, Dr. Handfield?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, that is it for this evening, thank you.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote, good night, everyone.